Hey Pervy, Pervy hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
What? You can hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. You guys need to wait, 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 wait. What the hell did you mean?
Oh my God.
Oh, what else? Better move it.
What'd you do Bob?
Bailey did it, I didn't do it. All right, Pervy, can you hear me all right?
Mm-hmm.
Good.
When chance we, when we, when Arn was still here, uh, unfortunately, I don't think I'm gonna work over for the house. Cause he was like, oh yeah, I think it's gonna be.
Could be when I first came on, I was on that board and then when I took chair, I had to switch some things around.
There we go.
So I couldn't get in line.
I just wanna say, you know, we discovered those needs of tires too, so like I said, whoever's in your exposition, we have to give each other this.
We'll figure it out.
It needs to be better.
It's so tough, so color regrets aren't the worst, especially with AI, we got there with some nasty ones, but it's just like. And it's A I, you can tell it's A I.
Was it?
Just being what?
Yes, Pervy.
Oh, I was just asking to turn off the mic.
Oh, okay, all right.
Okay.
Citizens.
I love it. Pretty drastic difference from an annual budget to find one to save them in a year already.
Yeah, it is kind of one of those activities that's kind of hard to, to judge at the beginning of the year where they'll land since it's kind of based on how many cases are filed. And just the type of services that those clients are needing, whether they need copies or anything like that.
Good morning, Stacy Michaelbus clerk. And she's right, it's really hard to determine what our budget's gonna be with that. We don't know how many divorces we're gonna file, we don't know how many small claims are gonna get sent over from district court, we don't know how many probates. So, again, copies, all of our fees for services are included in that, and it's about impossible to tell. And we really were, because of legislative changes, we were really, really careful this year with what we were expecting, I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna over budget, so I came in pretty conservatively.
And we typically, Kathy Funk Baxter, Finance Director, for the third quarter budget amendment, we will be amending all of our revenue budgets and looking at things like this.
Fines and penalties, they have a budget of $12,000 and brought in $23,000 so far. But like Kathy mentioned, that's another line that we'd be looking at in the third quarter budget amendment. Miscellaneous revenue, they didn't have a budget at the beginning of the year, so far they brought in $13,000. So $11,000 of that is BECA funding, so that's provided by the state, and they reimburse courts for costs associated with BECA cases. So an example of a BECA case would be like truancy. And then the rest of the revenue is related to the collections that go towards defendants' interests that have been accrued on any fines that they're assessed.
So, I, I, I know the BECA law and why that's there, who tracks attorney, is this from the state? That tracks the truancy and then they send out the check to the county?
Yeah, it's actually done for the juvenile department, the juvenile department is the one that tracks all of that, so.
Okay, and so they must be hooked to the school some, somehow, get, okay.
Yep.
What is BECA? I don't know what that is.
It was a, a young girl that was abducted or something. Good things didn't happen, and so they pass this, this law, she skipped school or did something like that, so they're trying, it was intended to keep better track on the, on the kids and where they're at.
They knew that for her.
Yeah, that's why it's called.
They could only miss so many days of school before a truancy petition is, is filed. And then the parents are basically put on notice that the child has missed this much time, and if it keeps going, then they'll have to come to court and answer for it, so.
And we get compensated for the filing of that?
Mm-hmm.
How many days did you say?
I don't know exactly how many days. And that's, it's all done by the school district, so the school district tracks everything, and then they file their petitions. Between the time they file their petitions and there's actually court action, they're working with the family trying to figure out what's.
So there's not, there's not guidelines in the BECA law?
There is, there is, I just don't know exactly what they are.
Okay.
And, and this is for every district in our county?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Is this for every district in our county?
We don't have every district in our county, I believe. They file it different, I, I don't know how, we've got like a few from Toodle, and so, yeah, it's, it's all of the schools, but not all of them are as, Lawview probably files the most, of course, because they're the largest, but.
Other financing sources has a budget of $117,000, and so far we've brought in $28,000. So we're slightly under our target so far. This is entirely made up of the transfers related to the mental health tax billings. So at, I believe we've received, actually, s- sorry, let me back up, so the $28,000, the department submits quarterly to our office, so that's just first quarter. So, we did just receive second quarter, it's just not reflected in the numbers yet, and it was another $29,000.
So by the end of the year, that 117 will be.
Personnel, they have a budget of 1.9 million, and so far have spent $707,000, so they are below target, and that's largely due to the fact that they have four vacancies currently in that department. Services, um, oh, sorry, supplies, they have a budget of $22,000, and I've spent just under $6,000, I spoke with Stacy and it sounds like they are monitoring that line item pretty closely and trying to save where they can, so we're anticipating that they might not spend that entire line item. Services has a budget of $382,000, and so far has spent $281,000. $245,000 is related to the IT internal service billings that are done in January. So we have one more to go over, that's gonna be the courthouse facilitator program. They have licenses and permits with a budget of $2,000, and so far have brought in $1,300, and that's entirely made up of revenue related to marriage licenses. Goods and services has a budget of $21,000, and so far has brought in just shy of $20,000. Again, those are transcript fees, so copies, notaries.
That also includes our appointment fee, so we have the court facilitator. What she does is reviews final paperwork for people that do not have attorneys representing them, and schedules them for their court hearings, so that includes the, the fee to see her, and those have, those appointments have increased less and less people can afford an attorney, and more and more are doing the, the pro se route. So we're, we're, we're benefiting because we're doing a few more appointments.
Stacy, did you just say that that person gets an attorney for someone who can't afford one?
No, if they can't afford an attorney, we have a local court rule that says if you're representing yourself, you have to have your final paperwork for a divorce reviewed by either an attorney, a limited license legal technician, or our court facilitator. And out of the three, our court facilitator is by far the cheapest. So they come in, they have a half hour appointment with her, she reviews their final paperwork, just to make sure basically that they have everything completed, they have the appropriate forms that they need, their 90 days have passed, all, they meet all the requirements to get put on the docket to go before the judge for finalization. And then they get into court, and sometimes they're not ready, the judge might want more information and might require a second appointment, but for the most part, that's how they get their divorces finalized. And it's not legal advice, all they're doing is making sure that they have the forms and they're following the proper procedures.
I would, you guys might know better than me, but I would think that that trend would continue with the caseload standards being what they are, there's not gonna be any attorneys available to help people with that, I would think, moving forward, that, you might benefit from that.
The caseload standards are really affecting the, the criminal side of things, and family law isn't, doesn't fall into that category. We do have, we had a presentation last week that Northwest Justice is, actually, it's Calit, Caiac and Legal Aid, they just changed to Timberland. So I'm like, I can't remember what their code name is, but they're offering clinics at the Hall of Justice now, like every, every Monday, they're, they're there. And so that might cut into our revenue a little bit, I don't know, we're going to have to kind of see how that plays out. But they're actually offering their services for people as well, so that's an actual attorney that's going to be there to help them. So we don't know what, what's going to happen with that, we'll have to wait and see how the program goes.
Personnel has a budget of 92,000 and so far has spent just shy of 40,000. They have one person that works in this department, no vacancies. It does look like they are just slightly below where we would expect them to be. But the second half of June's payroll would not have posted yet by the time we ran these.
I mean, I gotta go back just for a quick minute to this, they used to be Whacayak or whatever, Legal Aid comes in. Do we give them office space or what, what do we do?
There's conference rooms over at the, the Hall of Justice for attorneys to meet with clients and that's pretty much what they use. It's just a small conference room. There's one of them there typically on Mondays for like an hour, hour and a half. And they're, they're trying to expand that, that program so that they're going to be there during the docket. So if somebody does come in, needs additional help, the judge can send them out to see them and they can actually get real legal advice instead of waiting until they can schedule.
Is this space courts or we provide it out of the goodness of our heart or are we required to provide it?
I don't know if we're required to provide it, it's, it's just basically part of the courthouse lobby area. There's like a little bit of extra hallway space that they kind of set up in sometimes if the conference room isn't available. So it's, I don't know if we're required to provide it, but it is a service that the courts are really excited about because it seems like we have more and more people that need that extra help. So it might come in, cut into our revenue, but at the same time, it is going to help us finalize cases faster. So that's, that's a cost savings too.
Yeah, and, and I, I get that. Can, if I want to hold a meeting with somebody, can I use it? I mean, can public, can we use it or is this just available to?
It's, the doors open and it's basically just a little conference room with a table and some chairs. So.
Purge closet.
Pretty much.
Supplies has a budget of $350 and has spent 345 so far this year. Again, they are closely monitoring the supply line to try and not exceed budget. So we'll be keeping an eye on this one for the rest of the year. Services has a budget of 8,600 and so far has spent just over $8,000. And that's for the IT internal service billing for the year. And that's all I have for you.
Any other questions? Out of the hot seat?
I think we're good. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Kathy Funk Baxter, Finance Director. As promised, we had a, I wanted to bring to you some of the topics and ideas that came out of our budget retreat. We had this, I think, June 23rd. It was in the afternoon here in this building and we had most of our department, department heads attend the meeting. And of course, our goals for the meeting were to generate ideas that could result in reduced general fund expenditures or additional revenue to the general fund. And then also just in general, talking about creating a general fund that does not rely on use of fund balance. And we, we went over a little bit, different ways, discussed how to prepare their budgets, how to review their budgets for greater accuracy. And, and then we also handed out the budget calendar with the different workshops that will be coming up in September and October with the Board of Commissioners. And then we broke out into roundtables, we had four different groups and they had discussions at their tables and and, and brought up ideas and we had some that we, that we had already discussed and presented. One of them was vendor prompt payment discounts and our auditor's office is utilizing that for some of their larger contracts that they have. And so they, they discussed how that goes and how they, they were doing it and if other departments wanted to try that, it would be at the department's, the individual department's wishes to contact their vendors. And then we had some roundtable ideas for generating revenues. We talked about, had some examples of things that were, work that's ongoing right now. Facilities is reviewing how they're doing their billings and they're going to probably be making some changes to that. And then also, we had just finished undergoing district court billing rates and reviewed those and discussed how that had resulted in some additional revenue to the general fund. Yes.
Could you go back to, you said that the vendor payments on the, the 30 day net 10, or whatever it was that you said. You said that it was up to the individual department if they wanted to do that. On the general funds that are not elected, can't we, if we look at it and see that it's going to make a significant difference, make them do that?
Yes.
Or, okay.
Yeah, we can instruct those department heads that, that are not elected to do that. They would, they would actually have to contact their own vendors themselves and look at, look at some of their contracts to see if that's even allowable.
Allowable, yeah.
Mm-hmm. But Carolyn has been doing this and she's been successful in getting some of her larger vendors particularly to do this. I think it was net, it was a 2% discount, net 10. And she talked about the challenges with that, it means that as soon as you get the invoice in, you don't have any time to spare, you gotta get that invoice processed that same week that you received the invoice. Because we only cut checks once a week, so.
She, did she talk about what that 2% was over the year in her department?
No, she, she didn't, she didn't give the exact example. Anyway, so, so yeah, so we discussed some of the things that people were already doing to share with others to see if they could take advantage of that. And then we also talked about, are there ways to cost shift some of our expenses off of the general fund? Of course, at one time, you know, when we had the mental health, behavioral tax expenditures, those, those were primarily general fund expenses and they're being paid currently by the mental health tax receipts. So if there were any other like that that could be, could be done. And then we wrapped it up and people turned in their, their suggestions. But I have about, what, I have one, two, three, four, almost five pages worth of suggestions that were generated. But these were just suggestions and I have to give a disclaimer here. None of the items were researched as far as feasibility. And they, a lot of them would require investigation and some research to determine if we could actually implement the ideas that were thrown out and that were part of the roundtable. So I sent this out, I have some handouts. We don't have anybody here today in person, but if there's any that the commissioners would like us to or to research for feasibility.
Would you have this, could you have some copies of this available for people at Tuesday that might want to grab something?
Sure.
You're comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Because I, I got a couple thoughts on, on this. This is a we're, we're getting, you guys call it revenue, I call it tax receipts from the taxpayer, about the same amount of money that we've have in the past through sales tax and stuff. We're not, we're not, we've seen some decrease in the sales tax, but, but it's been pretty steady. The problem we're running into is the costs are, are outgrowing what's coming in.
Right, currently.
And, and this, this, this may sound a little about like whining, but it's really not, it's more disgust. We're in this position because we have had leadership in Olympia for the last, I don't know how many years. They've replaced economic principles with political agenda and they've replaced common sense with stupidity. And that spiraled this, and it spirals this economy down in a state that there's no reason that it should be having this problem. We're a state that's, that has healthy ports, we're a state that sits on water, we have rail system, we have natural resources in our lumber and mining and agriculture. There, and, and tourism, we have things that other states could only wish for. And we have nitwits in Olympia spiraling this economy down. And we will deal with it at a county level, but it's not caused by the taxpayer. This is 100% government stupidity causing this problem. And it just ticks me off that the taxpayer and people at this county will, will end up suffering the, the consequences of that. I can balance a budget, that's easy, it's just numbers. There, there's no magic to that, this side equals this side. But in that process, some, some departments, some programs are probably going to get hurt to make that there. And we'll take the blame for it because we're sitting in these chairs. But I'm telling you, it's, it's, it's actions in Olympia over the past year, past years that cause that. Until we get somebody up there that will actually look at economic principles, not political agenda, somebody that actually uses common sense and not stupidity. And the most important thing, somebody with the backbone to actually carry it out. We're going to be faced with this and it just, and it just ticks me off and it probably won't be the last time I, I talk, talk about this. Because it's just, it's, it's nonsense and, and we'll deal with it, but I'm going to point the finger every time I can at the people that are causing this kind of crap.
A death spiral.
Hmm?
It's a death spiral.
It is, they've got us in a death spiral in a state that there should be no reason for it.
They're spinning into the whole long round.
So anyway, so when I, when I look at some of the, and I look through this list and I, I'm not trying to be critical, but if you think I'm going to go in here and start raising taxes on people and just do the same thing that the state's doing to them to solve a problem that they caused, it doesn't solve the problem. You're taking money out of people's wallets, which is productive money, they pay for goods and services, they pay for salaries, they pay for, for that type of thing and putting it in non-productive pockets that just spend it on their political nonsense and stupid programs. And so I'm not going to fall into that trap of, of harming the people we're supposed to be helping. And I know that's going to be a tough thing because some, it is going to require some change on, on our part and I, I get that. But if I just keep taking it out of the productive pockets, we just, we'll just, we just add to the spiral. And I'm not, personally, I'm not willing to do that.
Well, the good news is that we generated at least over three pages of expenditure reductions. Things that we could look at, at reducing and some of them have, some of them probably could be implemented. Some of them would require some research, like I said, for feasibility. And some that are related to, may have an impact on collective bargaining agreements. So again, I have that disclaimer that we, we didn't research these, we, we just threw out ideas. And we were just trying to be more of a roundtable and, and generate conversation and discussion.
Well, thank you Kathy for doing that and I agree with the chairman and, and the trend doesn't seem to be getting any better. It's, they're going to continue doing what they've been doing, so we have to, we're going to be the bear that burden.
Are there, are there any items you would like us to begin investigating, looking at?
I would say, I would leave that up to you to determine which ones you feel are the most viable options that we can utilize. You know, moving forward, that would make a, an impact.
Yeah, I looked back, I think we went through this exercise in the county in 2019, maybe 2018. And so there was some things that they did as far as looking at travel and things like that. Some of the discretionary type items. But some of the individuals, the department heads brought up, said some of the training and travel is related to certifications that are required for them to perform their work. So, but anyway, so there are some, some ideas in this that we probably could implement.
I think we probably all have some thoughts, I certainly have some, I'm not thinking I'm at the point where I want to.
Yeah. Well, we're going to have lots of workshops, we're going to have lots of discussions. I'm going to send something out to the departments to begin to solidify what date they'd like to be on the workshop for their specific departments. So you'll be hearing from departments on their ideas as well as what things that they, they feel that they could do to reduce expenses or raise revenues.
Are you talking Mondays or Tuesdays or?
It'll be Tuesday in September, it starts in September.
Okay.
And the first, the first Tuesday in September, I will present the estimated revenue and expense budget to you so you can see big picture, what it looks like. Because that's when we'll be finishing up the first draft of the budget. And then right after that, we have workshops with the individual departments. So, and I, I will look over this list and see if there's any that seems like what I call low hanging fruit and make recommendations to, to the commissioners.
Okay. Can I change subject on you for a minute?
Yep, I'm, I'm finished.
And Suzie actually helped me with this a little bit, I think she sent a note out to all, all three of us. In fact, we had a workshop last Wednesday with Rotary Parks down in Woodland on their Scott Hill project. And, and I know we had given money to it before and, and I couldn't recall, you know, where that came from. And Suzie sent out, and we took that out of that rural development funds when we did that. And I know you, you like to keep a buffer in there and I, and I agree with it. I'm not, I'm not telling you to disagree with, agree with you. I, I think you like to keep a buffer because probably somewhat with the state just showing you have a buffer and somewhat if, if something really comes up, we want to fund that you have some funder, funds there for it. So I'm, I'm wondering, and it's more of a conversation to my, my colleagues, there seems to be, there seem to be a lot of interest in, in trying to get that final first phase thing done and getting that, that arc open. And if that's true, we do have funds that could do that. It cuts into your buffer a little bit and I get that, but we do have funds that could do that. And so I guess my question to my colleagues, if, if we feel like we want to make that step. And the other caveat I would add is I don't want to shortchange our own park. We had them in and they're, they've got a big grant that they got from RCO, we just have to match it. And I think they're about 250 short, so I don't want to, I don't want to steal from them, them either. So I don't know how to, I don't know if.
And we, I think we. And we, I think we still need to research the other issues that were no longer considered a rural county after the Office of Finance and Management for the state did their projections, their population projections. And Suzie and I are going to try to continue to reach out to DOR and figure out what's, when is it that, when is it that we stopped collecting the rural sales tax?
Yeah, she, she did, you know, send a thing that looked like the year two thousand fifty, fifty-four if they abide by, by that. I, I personally would hate to see that go away because I think it's done a, I mean, we've given over, over time, over five million dollars to Port Longview for projects, Woodland, I mean, we.
And total, it's been about thirty-six million dollars.
And, and we've been really good and, and I'm not speaking on ourselves. It takes more than one set of commissioners, it's been really good over the years to try and put it into infrastructure for the, public would see benefits type, type thing. Water projects, sewer parks, rail, whatever, you know, to help that. So I think it's been used wisely as, as far as I can see, and I think they've been beneficial. So it would, I would hate to see it go away. I under, understand that it could be taken, but hopefully that two thousand fifty-four is a, is a good year.
So is that decision, you said, based off of projections or is it actual census?
The State Office of Financial Management did the, did the estimates for the population. And so for our county, we're no longer considered rural. But, but the question is exactly what you're saying, how long? It says that you can collect it for up to twenty-five years. But then it's a, it's really a rebate of the state tax. And so I, I really would like to get somebody at the state to tell us, are we going to be receiving that in the next fiscal year?
Writing, because they can change their mind at any point in time.
Right, that's what I'm worried about. So if, if it, if it stops for the fiscal year, I think Suzie and I looked at it. September would be our last month, but I need to figure out if they're going to continue to give us the rebate. I hope so.
Yeah.
Because it brings in about two million a year for the county to disperse to infrastructure projects.
So maybe it's, it's wise to try and kind of get that hammered out before we spend any more of your reserves? Is that what you're kind of telling me?
Yes, I'd like to, I'd like to get an authoritative answer on that. The legislation says that you can collect it, I mean, you can, you're qualified for twenty-five years, but I just want to make absolutely sure that they don't just stop dispersing it to us.
Okay.
Well, and to address your point, Mr. Chairman, I, I think that whatever we can do, you know, when you talk about tourism and everything we have in our county, whatever we can do while we can to try and offset what up north is shoving down our throats to mitigate that by doing that type of stuff. I think we should take every opportunity we can to do it.
Yeah.
Yep.
So can we give you a little bit of time to do that and maybe find something and then?
Yeah, I think this week we should be able to get an answer from somebody.
And I'd like to address that and see if we feel like we should help both Rotary and our own parks. Maybe there's different money for our own parks, but I don't want to shortchange our people either.
Yeah, and we dispersed to that Scott Hill Park last year was fifty thousand dollars.
Well, we, we gave them.
We gave them, yeah, before, before that, but they, they were running short last year on a particular commitment. We gave them fifty thousand dollars.
Just what struck me this was if we can do this last push, then they can actually open that thing and people can start enjoying it. And then I think the outside investment just.
Would get, come in and.
Beats up.
Money, yeah.
Yeah.
It's actually very close to where I live and I went and looked at it one day.
Did you?
I was like, it's, it would be, and I've looked at the plans and everything, it looks very nice.
Yeah, I think it's.
It's, I think it's in three, three phases total.
Yeah.
And they haven't even opened phase one.
And that's where we're trying to get, yeah. Okay, that was my off the topic.
Okay.
Okay. Well, for agenda review, Public Works is pulling their item for tomorrow, so the only one left on there is corrections. So, Maran, if you want to do, we can take care of you. I don't know if Jessica has anything. Okay.
Good morning, Maran Fox, Director of Corrections. Tomorrow on consent agenda, you have a contract amendment with the Washington State Department of Corrections. This is the contract we've had in place for very many years, twenty plus, to hold their, what would be commonly understood as parole violators. So it's an increasing our daily rate that they pay the county by five percent, which is the maximum they can increase. And that's just sort of a bill, a built-in price increase they do for all of their agencies. So that brings us to one oh nine oh four until June of twenty-six and then it goes to one hundred and fourteen forty-nine.
And is that like per inmate per day?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
We don't take a ton of those in, do we?
We don't, I think we're averaging under ten right now, kind of as a running, running number.
We're the only facility right down here that takes in, right?
Clark County does not take them at all, quite a few counties don't take them at all. I, I'm not sure if Lewis County currently has a contract, but there are many counties that don't. If they, if we don't take them, then they'll end up driving them to Nisqually Tribal Jail typically. If we, if we can't take their medical needs or something like that.
I have a nephew that works for Department of Corrections up in the Bellevue area and they, they take them to a private enterprise called SCORE.
Yeah, SCORE is a municipal jail, it's a number of the cities in Seattle area created a municipal jail, it's in Tacoma.
Okay, so this was, this was created by the, the cities?
Yeah, yep.
Why don't a lot of counties take them?
Um, space. Space for one thing, I mean, typically there, they can be kind of, if they violated and they've been on the run, they're typically not going to be in great condition, they're going to be detoxing. And most counties, you're going to prioritize your local fresh arrests, the warrants for local law enforcement over DOC. Because DOC has options in other facilities they can take these people to. Our city police do not have that option, so they're the priority, DOC's second priority. They can take them to Shelton if they, if they need to.
Yeah. You know, that's interesting because he was telling me the same thing, SCORE will take most of these. But if, I don't even know how to point this, if, if, if it's a person that is having some issues, there's a, a higher probability of them, I don't know, maybe it's drugs or it's just health in general, SCORE won't take them.
Correct.
They take them down to Shelton or they take them elsewhere.
Yes.
Which I find interesting.
That's correct, we, we do the same thing. But you're, you know, managing liability to some extent. If, if we know they're going to be a, a problem and put the county in liability and, and we know DOC has an option to take them elsewhere, we're going to let them take care of their own, their own high needs people. But we work with them if they have somebody that's high needs and we'll hold them overnight and work with them. We, we hold overnight and have people transported out if they're problematic. We do try our best to take people they need off their rates.
Yeah. This really has nothing to do with the simple per DM request, but I just find it interesting how it all, how they all work this together, it seems convoluted at times.
Yeah.
Is this a contract, a yearly thing we do or is it, when you set it up, it, does it run for two or three or is it, you look at it every year?
It has varied, we look at it every year, it doesn't, typically language, there's not very much language change. Sometimes after a number of years we'll do that, we've been in this contract since two thousand nineteen with amendments changing the rate.
But if I say tomorrow it's a contract, we, we at least look like, look at it on an annual basis, I'd be corrected then?
Yes, that's correct.
Are you the one that decides, can you go to them and adjust the, the rate if needed, whenever you need to? Or do we, how often do we evaluate that?
The state decides for us on this contract.
Oh.
There's really not much rate negotiation available. It was a cap, it was capped at three percent for a long time and we pushed pretty hard to get that changed. They're, they're regulated to five percent by RCW, that's the most they can, I'm not sure if it's RCW, but by the state. That's the most they can increase, this is five percent a year. But they're currently paying more than the cities, so that's, for a long time they were way behind, which bothered the cities, but now they're paying more, which is good. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Maran. Jessica, we can do, get you in way early if you're okay with that.
Good morning, Jessica Warren, Human Resources. I have a couple of requests from Public Works. The first is a request to start their utilities foreman position at step three and keep his step date scheduled first October first, two thousand twenty-five.
Okay.
And then the next one is the request to start their interim assistant county engineer candidate at step nine, which is eleven thousand six hundred and fifty-two a month, as well as starting with two weeks vacation and maintain his years of service prior to leaving county employment in two thousand twenty-four.
Yeah. Do you know, did, did he accept that or?
I believe he did.
Okay.
And this will be on an interim basis and while they work on the job description.
finalize the job description and put it out for?
Correct.
Jessica, in that scenario, step nine doesn't really leave him anywhere to go, right? Would that change if he was the candidate that we chose for that position itself?
Um, it depends on where we decide to place the salary grade, if we make changes. That's the current budget salary, budgeted salary grade, so as of right now, no. But if there's any changes made to the job or the position, then yes. Anything else on that one? Okay. And then the only other item I have is a request for executive session, performance of a public employee.
Time?
Five.
Five minutes, okay.
It's quick.
Okay, we'll adjourn to executive sessions, performance of a public employee, estimated time, five minutes.
Looking for, because this would be me. I said, is there any electric bikes out here? Because I'd be.
Okay, back from executive session, no decisions rendered, Jessica, I'll turn it back over to you.
I have one more request from Corrections. She is requesting to promote her administrative assistant three position into an offender services lead position at salary grade twenty-one, which will be a five percent increase.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I have today.
Thank you. Looks like we had an administration finance. Looks like we had an administration finance leadership meeting. Is that you, Commissioner Rader?
Uh, yes, that's on the meeting that we had this last week. Um, it went, what we talked about was uh, I had a couple of department heads approach me about some personnel issues they were having um, and how to deal with those. And so we talked about um, the hiring process and the work pool uh, that we have to pick from and how shallow it is right now. Uh, and actually one of them is working, uh, called the um, the risk pool to get some professional help, uh, to help them with some of the issues that they had. So it was good. Uh, some of the other um, department heads that were in there were experiencing similar situations. And so they all benefited from that information coming forward and, and what to do with it. Uh, we talked about uh, the hiring process, questions to ask and the, the, one of the traps that we fall into oftentimes is we need people, we need bodies because we're short and we just settle for hiring somebody and that is a bite, yeah, in the long run. So we don't, we just talked about making sure that we hire the right people for the right position and not falling into, we just got to get somebody in there because man, that can, that can cost some serious problems real quick.
Over, over forty years, I found hiring the wrong person actually puts you under more work than it was without it.
Amen.
Yeah.
But it was good. We talked about that and I think that the, the department heads that were struggling and had issues with that walked away with some good stuff and uh, the one, the, the one department that is using that professional help is going to continue to bring forth some of the things that they're getting that those other ones could benefit from. So now the, the, the department is starting to work together with that, which is cool, which is what we ultimately wanted, was them helping each other out with some of the issues that they were dealing with in common. So it was good. It was a good meeting.
Okay. Looking around if I see anything else we missed. I think we're covered. Anything else? Okay, we will adjourn. Thank you.